I'd like to call the meeting of the City Council Public Financing Authority to order. City Clerk, may I call the roll please?
Yes, Councilmember Mosher.
Here.
Councilmember Bolton.
Here.
Mayor Protem Burns.
Here.
Mayor Vandermark.
Here.
Councilmember Strickland.
Here.
Councilmember McKeon.
Here.
Councilmember Kelmick.
Here.
All present.
Thank you. City Council member comments, would anybody, any council member like to make a comment? Okay, seeing that moving on to an announcement of supplemental communications pertaining to closed session and study session items, do we have any supplemental communications?
Yes, Mayor, for study session item number one, a PowerPoint presentation was received from Sunny Hahn, our Chief Financial Officer, entitled "City of Huntington Beach Proposed Fiscal Year 2024/25 Budget Review," and one email communication received regarding the item.
Thank you. Do we have anyone signed up to speak?
Yes, we have three people signed up to speak. I'll call them all down at this time. Pat Goodman, Robert Sternberg, and Ellen Riley, please come down to both podiums.
At this time, the City Council will receive comments from members of the public on the closed session items. Individuals wishing to provide a comment on items may do so in person by filing out a request to speak form and handing it to the city clerk. All speakers are encouraged but not required to identify themselves by name. Each speaker may have up to three minutes unless the volume of speakers warrants reducing the time allowance. Please note that the Brown Act does not allow discussion or action on topics that are not on the agenda. Members of the public who would like to speak directly with the council member on an item not on the agenda may consider scheduling an appointment by contacting the City Council's Administrative Assistant at 714-536-5553, or emailing the entire City Council at city.council@surfcity-hb.org. First speaker, go ahead.
Good evening, Mayor Vandermark and councilmembers. My name's Pat Goodman, and I reviewed the PowerPoint provided by Sunny Hahn for the preliminary discussion of the 2024/35, I mean 25 budget, general fund construction in progress information. How much time do we have?
Three minutes.
Oh, thank you. And I understand that the next meeting would present detailed, complete with assumptions and notes for various funds under the control of the city. As I recall, there'll be comparative statements, actual versus budget statements for each department, including the library. Here are some questions and requests that you disclosed prior to the presentation of the first draft. An explanation of what comprises the general fund losses in subsequent years in order to make corrections. Is a 2% increase in TOT reflected in the 2024/25 budget? Has the comment mentioned by a member of the downtown bid group that visitors are down this year been reflected in the budget? Line item comparative budgets for our elected officials and general manager identified as other expenditures at 3.8% of the total budget. Explanation of how the city accounts for settled and pending settlements of lawsuits and claims. Update on payment of the redevelopment loan repayment by the state and the award to the Kennedy Commission related to the fifth cycle housing element lawsuit. Where are the payments to code Ford settlement reflected for each year and the balance due? Unfunded accrued liability pension costs and estimates. Please provide a refresher of how this activity is estimated and the accounting from year to year. Subsequent budgets to 2024/25 show an increase of approximately $4 million per year in the UAL. How are unfilled positions accounted for in the budget versus overtime and outsourcing to backfill open positions? If a position is open for an extended period, is it time to eliminate it or outsource it? I noticed 35 open full-time, part-time positions, one promotional job on the website. How many FTEs do these openings represent? I also hope that, I know that tonight you'll be discussing the point in time count. This is really important for us to improve the services provided to the unhoused. Will there be any proposals in the new budget to address, to prevent homelessness in the first place? This would be a great way to cut costs.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you.
Next speaker.
Good afternoon, Mayor and City Council members. My name is Robert Sternberg. I'm a long-term resident of Huntington Beach, and I'm here personally to discuss something with you in relation to the budget and for future consideration. A year ago, I was writing to you about an item, believe it or not, that's not political, and it's not, shouldn't be controversial, but an item of public safety. It's yellow borders on the traffic signals and also red reflective strips on stop signs and also on crosswalks. I had emailed you a pictures and something in mid-March. Some of you responded back, thank you. I just wanted to say, in consideration of the budget and what I have to say, maybe you can give this some consideration. The city, after my email, changed their policy so that all new traffic signals will have the yellow reflective borders on it, all right? But they said nothing about, and anytime maintenance is done, they'll put them on, but they said nothing about the receptive, the stop sign reflective strips. They are really highly visible. Fountain Valley did it. Actually, the state of California's new policy is to have it. That's why you're going to see it up and down Beach Boulevard and also Pacific Coast Highway because they're state roads. And maybe Huntington Beach can do a little better by asking for some grant money or some, you know, allocation from the public works, say $50,000, to get some of the dangerous intersections have this put on. I understand that everybody thinks, everybody I talked to thinks it's a great idea, but then they say we have no money. So, I don't know, I think collective minds can come up with some way to at least cover the dangers, dangerous intersections in this city. As, the city knows which intersections are dangerous, which ones have accidents. The fire department knows, public works knows, even legal department knows which accident, where they happen. So, I'm like, can you maybe give that a consideration in this budget and get this done so that with all the visitors that we have, that it's more noticeable? Thank you very much for your consideration.
Thank you. Next speaker, go ahead.
Um, yes, I'm, I haven't really seen the entire budget, but I have some ways to save the city a lot of money. And, but the first thing is the RFP that is suggested, I think that that should be canceled. I know that you're talking about $1 million. I don't think anybody in Huntington Beach wants an out-of-state, east coast company coming in and taking over our library. I don't think anybody in Huntington Beach would want that to happen. How to raise money, that's, that's number one, so cancel, that's my opinion, cancel that RFP suggestion. Builders and developers, fill the housing element, do what the state is asking because we have a lot of vacant land here. And guess what happens when housing element will be filled? The developers will come in, they'll bring us a whole pot of money. When we have extra housing, there's taxes, all kinds of taxes that homeowners will be paying. To buy, to sell, we have lots of vacant land. I'd be glad to show you where it is. And it doesn't have, I think we could possibly get it modified by the state so it's not dense and it's not high-rise or anything like that. I think we could work with the state to do that. Home sales bring huge amount of revenue to cities. That is something that we need. We need to bring in revenue. I also had an idea about taxing though, taxing, considering taxing, maybe raising taxes on alcohol and cigarettes, that kind of discretionary consumption. Other, I went to, I've gone to other city meetings on the budget, neighboring cities. They're talking about raising sales tax. Maybe that's something we consider. Our sales tax is lower than adjacent cities or some adjacent cities. I'm suggesting that the overtime budget that we have for many staff be reduced or be reduced drastically. Other cities proposed, when I went to their meetings, reducing training, membership, and all of these meetings that, that staff have. But, their training is good, but just reduce the time that is spent, time and money that is spent at all of these meetings. And, close, close open positions, the many open positions we have which people apparently do not want to fill because unfortunately, there are many people who do not want to work in this city now. They feel like there's a really unpleasant, unpleasant atmosphere. But closed positions that have been filled, unfilled for ages, that'll save the city a lot of money. And also consider capping or deleting extra positions in the city attorney's office. Nobody has that many contracted workers working in city attorney offices in most of the area. Oh, helicopters.
Thank you. Thank you.
That concludes public comments for study session.
Thank you. Well, moving on to study session, Steph, please proceed with your presentation.
Thank you. Good evening, our mayor and city council members. Tonight, we have a presentation presenting the proposed 24/25 budget for review and consideration. So, we'll be going over the 24/25 general fund budget, as well as the capital improvement budget, and the opioid settlement spending plan, as well as key budget considerations for 24/25. So, I'm pleased to announce that the 24/25 proposed budget is structurally balanced with a proposed $132,000 surplus. So, we have recurring general fund revenues of $293 million and one-time revenues of 6.9 million, which are one-time transfers, which are one-time revenues of 6.9 million for the first repayment related to the waterfront loan for the, for the Superior Court judgment. For this, we're recommending that 25% be transferred to the Section 115 Trust in accordance with the reserve policy that was adopted by City Council with the 23/24 budget as well. And then 23% would be transferred to the Equipment Replacement Fund. 15% would be transferred to the Workers' Compensation Fund, and the remaining 37% would be transferred to the General Liability Fund. So, we also, the general fund expenditures includes personnel costs of $191 million, operating costs of $57 million, and non-operating costs of $51.4 million, for total expenditures of $299.6 million. So, we also have continued infrastructure investments in 24/25 with total transfers, general fund transfers to the Infrastructure Fund of $14.5 million. So, here we have a pie chart which shows our proposed revenues, general fund revenues, and as you can see, property tax does make up our largest allocation at 36.1% or 100, or close to 105 million, and then sales tax at close to 18% or 52 million. So, some of the major revenue variances include property tax, which has a $3.3 million increase from our mid-year projections, and that's largely due to higher assessed valuations as of January 1st. And then, we also have an increase in revenue from other agencies, and that's largely due to the CAL OPTIMA revenues that we will be receiving from our EMS transports. And then, we also have increases in non-operating revenues as well, and that would be due to the one-time transfer, as previously mentioned, of 6.9 million from the former redevelopment agencies for the first, for the first repayment related to the waterfront loan Superior Court judgment. And again, this is partially offset by the, by the current year of one-time revenue of $2.3 million for the Emerald Cove Superior Court judgment. So, then next, we have the 24/25 general fund proposed expenditures of $299.6 million. So, we have it shown to section, in two forms, both by category and by department. So, personnel costs do make up the largest percentage of the general fund expenditures at 63.7%, followed by operating at 19.1%, and then debt service at 2.2% and transfers at 15%. And then, we have it broken out again by department as well. So, some of the major expenditure variances for personnel just include increases to CAL PERS, particularly with our CAL PERS UAL. So, fiscal year 24/25 is when we'll first recognize the increase in our CAL PERS UAL due to the negative 7.5% CAL PERS investment return that was experienced in fiscal year 21/22. We'll also have continuing impacts from our MOU, from our MOUs, and we're also recommending the addition of four FTEs as well, and we'll provide more information on that in the following slides. We do have a decrease in our operating costs and of 2.6%, and that was due to just a department, to a citywide effort from all of our departments to realign costs and to just gain efficiencies in order to preserve funding for just the contractual increases and inflationary demands so that we could really preserve the core services provided by the city. So, within the 24/25 budget, we're recommending four new positions. So, within the Community Development Department, we're recommending one building inspection supervisor in order to provide staff supervision and oversight for complex residential and commercial projects. So, this will really help with succession planning and also to be able to provide just greater services to, to the public as well. And then, within the fire department, we are also recommending the addition of one limited-term management aide to serve as a community engagement coordinator, and this would be funded through opioid settlement funds. And so, this would be a strictly grant-funded position. And so, when, whenever the opioid settlement funding runs out, then this position would also be eliminated at that time as well. So, within the police department, we're also recommending the addition of one real-time crime center supervisor. And so, this would be the first position that would be directly related to the real-time crime center in order to just kind of oversee the setup for our new real-time crime center. And so, then, within the Public Works Department, we have one fleet maintenance crew leader that we're recommending, and that would be to coordinate, just monitoring and oversight for the city's nine fuel sites. We do have just increased regulatory compliance just from both federal, state, and local agencies, and it is just requiring more and more time from our existing fleet staff, and just non-compliance would result in more fines and just more fines and penalties that could potentially arise if this position weren't, weren't filled. And then, we also have one senior mechanic position that we're also recommending as well, and that position would provide support for the fire department in order to help with just increased demands just due to more call volume and increased transports that cause increased wear and tear on the fire department's ambulances and engines. So, we're also recommending restructuring non-general fund positions as well, so upgrading one vacant capital projects administrator to a capital projects supervisor in order to oversee construction project management, as well as contract administration, and upgrading one vacant deputy public works director position, and combining the public works, city engineer position with the deputy public works director position, just for greater efficiencies. And as a result, we would eliminate the city engineer position. So, then, here's just an overview of our full-time FTE count for all funds from fiscal year 14/15 through fiscal year 24/25. And so, then here, we have the city's long-term financial plan. So, as you can see, it was updated to include our proposed 24/25 budget with our one-time revenues perceived from the waterfront loan, and then our projected surplus of $132,000. And then, we also have our projected outlook through fiscal year 27/28. So, this outlook for '25, '26 through '27, '28 has remained the same from the mid-year presentation that was presented in March. So, just in keeping with the city's strategic plan goal of fiscal stability and just to proactively address the future budget deficits that were shown on the previous slide, we've retained consultants in order to prepare updated fee schedules for both our EMS fees as well as our master fees, as well as our master fee and charges schedules. So, the city's EMS fees were last updated in 2021, and the city's master fee schedule was last updated in 2016. So, just for best practices, we, as I said, retain consultants to prepare updated fee schedules, and so, we will be presenting our recommendations at our budget adoption And so, with that, I'll be turning the presentation over to our city engineer, Tom Herbell, to discuss our CIP.
Thank you, Sunny. Well, good afternoon, Mayor, council, staff. With me here today is Joe Fuentes. I got to give a shout out to my guy back there in the back. He's instrumental in helping put this massive project together, so I just want to give him the kudos tonight. And also, this really is our major planning tool. This helps us plan, organize what we do day in and day out. We don't do things on the cuff, on the fly. So, this is our future. This is how we plan the work we do, and this is, helps us to execute the plan. Also up here today, there's a great picture up there of the people that serve you day in and day out, 24/7, 365. They're there for your emergencies, our floods, anything that happens within the city. Public Works is there for the entire city, no matter what it is. I also want to give a big shout out to Sarah Wyckott and Nancy Rodriguez, who are part of the backbone of assembling the CIP with Joe, and also Dave Fader, our construction manager, who builds all the stuff that's going on out there that you see. We've got 20 projects under construction right now and 35 completed, and it doesn't happen without a team, so I want to give kudos to them also. And also, I'll ask that you reserve questions, I think you already know, till the end of the presentation. And, next slide, please. So, before I get into this year's CIP, I just wanted to acknowledge that, wow, we have done a lot. I talked about the 20 projects under construction and 35 completed, and with that, we're moving the infrastructure forward for the city. And, under the funding sources category there, the most important sought-after fund is our general fund infrastructure fund. We had $30 million in requests, and I'm proud to say we're actually able to fund $8 million of those requests. Of course, we all wish we had an unlimited source of income to fund everything, but we're very good at organizing and prioritizing what we do. And now, on to this year's CIP. We have $35 million in projects proposed this year with $8 million in continuing funds. That's okay, Sunny, you can go to the next one. So, now, let's just talk infrastructure because that's what we're here to talk about. The first category is drainage, and we have one project this year, which is the installation of nine tide check valves. Everybody knows the harbor in PCH, and when we get the king tides, it floods. These valves will be installed to help keep the water from coming back up the storm drains and into our streets. So, we've needed these for a long time. Caltrans has some of them. We're actually working with Caltrans to update theirs because they leak, so this will be a great step forward to keeping Sabre, PCH, and quite a few of the streets in the harbor from water backing up during the king tides into the streets. Next slide, Sunny. In the facilities category, there are 4.9 million in projects planned. I'm just going to go over some of the most notable projects. The Newland House Museum, we're going to be replacing rotted wood and repaint. The Park Bench Cafe is going to get a new roof and siding repair. We're going to be adding air conditioning at the Main Street Library. In addition, we're going to be doing a leak assessment at Civic Center to identify the causes of the water leaking into the lower level. We've all seen the hoses in the lower level that drain into trash cans. We're trying to figure out the cause of that problem. Next also is the installation of fueling station canopies at our Park Trees and Landscape Yard, Lake Fire Station, our Corporate Yard, and Beach Maintenance Yards, and we need these in order to comply with the Regional Water Quality Control Board requirements. In addition to the downtown parking structure, we're upgrading the elevators, the stairs, and signage. And then, also, we're getting two new Butler Buildings, one at Gothard Fire and Murdy Fire, to house fire, fire apparatus. Next slide, thanks, Sunny. In the neighborhood category, there is the Zone 2 project for $7 million, which involves new concrete, sidewalks, curb returns, trees, and paving, which includes both slurry seal and asphalt overlay. And Zone 2 is bounded by Warner to the north, Beach to the east, Springdale to the west, and Ellis to the south. In the Parks and Beaches category, there are 4.6 million in projects planned. Some of those most notable projects include Ninth Street Playground. The playground that's down there, we call it Pirate Park. It's open to the salt air and it corrodes heavily, so there's a lot of replacement that needs to be done, and we're going to be doing it with more stainless steel and wood type improvements to the park to keep it and make it last longer. We're also going to be upgrading softball fields at both Greer and Worthy Park with new turf and irrigation. In addition to that, Langenbeck Park, which is at Garfield and Newland, and Pleasant View Park at Highland and Newland, will get new play equipment. Discovery Well Park will get a new booster pump for irrigation. You all noticed, the irrigation shut off because the booster pump has failed. And at PCH and Sixth Street, we'll be getting a new sidewalk to move pedestrians off the drive aisle. If you notice, when you come across from CVS Pharmacy, you have to walk down the drive aisle. There's no direct path to get you to the beach from there. So, we'll be adding a sidewalk on the southern side to be able to get people out of the drive aisle and walking along the side of the drive aisle. Next category, Sunny. And then, in the sewer improvement category, there's $2 million for the construction of the wet well for the McFadden Lift Station, which is basically Phase 2. We had to separate with the original contractor due to contractual disagreements, so this is basically Phase 2, which is building the big hole in the ground out, out there. Next slide. Oh, you're already there. And then, in the Streets and Transportation category, there's $8.2 million in projects planned. Some of those most notable Some of those most notable projects include the ADA Improvement Program, which is the construction of the ADA Improvement citywide, as identified in the city's ADA Transition Plan. In addition, the citywide mobility and corridor improvements are for projects that enhance bicycle and pedestrian facilities. In addition to that, we're gonna be doing a downtown street lighting project, which is replacing the old high-voltage circuits downtown that have a tendency to fail. And this streetlight circuit is along Main Street from 14th to Pecan. And then, in addition to that, the Bolsochica Bridge will get some preventative maintenance. And when I say preventive maintenance, when you see a lot of our bridges, there's spalled concrete, the railing's damaged, there's things that need a lot of help due to our salt environment. So, we're doing a lot of basically cosmetic improvements to keep the bridges last longer. And then, also, the last one is the Main Street and downtown area. Staff is currently working on a phased plan for the implementation of the specific plan. And this money will be used for the final design of the first phase of the identified improvements. In the Water category, there are $8.2 million in projects planned. Some of those notable projects are the PEC Reservoir, which will be assessed as to whether the roof needs to be replaced or rehabbed due to corrosion damage. Well 3A will construct improvements for the treatment of the high levels of manganese in our water. In addition to that, Well 4 Rehab will increase water capacity with new pumps and motors. Well 14, House and Drilling Project, will provide for all new underground works such as well drilling and zone aquifer testing in preparation for a new well. In addition to that, the Well 14 Storm Drain, which supports the project I just talked about, will provide for the design of a storm drain system to capture the flow from the new well. So, when we start up a new well, there's a lot of discharge before we can put it into the drinking water system, and that storm drain is needed to be able to carry those flows that we discharge, and they'll just go into the storm drain system. And last but not least, OC 35 needs to be relocated, as the old location has had water quality problems due to stagnant water. And this new location will help us to provide fresh water. And then, with that, I'm gonna turn it over. I said questions up there, but I'll just turn it over to Chief Lopez to talk about opioid settlement.
Thank you, Tom. Honorable Mayor and Council Members, my name is Jeff Lopez, and I'll be turning my button on. Thank you very much. Honorable Mayor and Council Members, Jeff Lopez with the Fire Department, presenting our 2425 fiscal year opioid settlement spending plan. We have, as you may be aware, a good deal of funds that have come to us through a couple of different settlements and bankruptcy process that gives us close to $900,000 on hand that the Fire Department is proposing that we spend in the coming fiscal year. And we'll be doing so in accordance with the settlement agreements that are in place. There's two separate settlement agreements, also a statewide abatement agreement from the Mallinckroft bankruptcy. The funds would be used for high-impact abatement activities, as stipulated. At least 50% of the funds that come from the abatement fund need to be used on high-impact abatement activities. And we'll do so, and all of the funds will be tracked and spent according to the other requirements. And you'll see on the third slide or second slide, go one more down. On the allowable expenditures here, we have a chart that you probably can't read it too well from there. I'm blowing it up just for me from here. But five of the six items identified on the high-impact abatement activities are gonna be where we will focus our attention. And I won't get into details on it, largely because a big part of our process is hiring a physician to help us design the plan for doing all of this. So, the other funds that don't hit that table will all still be following the additional charts from Category A and Category B in the settlement agreements. There are a couple of key positions that we need in order to succeed in our efforts here. You can advance this slide, please. And these are, these two positions, one of them is a Chief Medical Officer. And so, we are proposing to cover 100% of the costs for a Chief Medical Officer in Year One to basically build our plan, build up the programs in place. And then, from there forward, we'll reduce the amount of opioid money paying that physician, because our hopes is that he finds other additional funding sources to continue the efforts that we're doing. So, the Year One effort will be a big push to help set us up for subsequent years. The other position is a full-time, this would be an employee, whereas the physician would be by contract. The other position we're asking for is an FTE Management Aid Position that, as was mentioned earlier by our Chief Financial Officer, will only be employed as long as we're getting these funds. So, it's a limited-term role, depending on the continued opioid settlement funding. And this person would be community outreach. They'd be the one out there in the street putting the plan into action, connecting with schools, connecting with facilities, connecting with even the homeless, connecting with folks in the community where we're working to make contacts. And in the next slide, you'll see a detailed expenditure plan that outlines six different areas where we would be spending these funds. Two of them, we already described in those two positions. And a bulk of it is also going to be for equipment and supplies, some of which may or may not get fully spent in the 2425 fiscal year. But all these funds roll over. We have five years to spend the funds that we received. And so, the key is going to be for those two positions getting put in place, and the physician working on a plan for us to deploy all of these expenses that we've described here. Do you have any questions for me on the topic?
Councilmember Moser.
This might be a later question. But with regards to the Chief Medical Officer, I know it's part-time, and they're gonna be focusing on the substance use disorder issue. If there's spare time, which I doubt there will be, would this person potentially look at other things, like we were talking about, street medicine? Are those types of options in the future?
Yes, certainly, because street medicine really, that we were looking at as a city, would be able to be targeting, like, straight away, the opioid use disorder efforts and all this. And so, that, that sort of model of a mobile effort to provide health care to everybody, you know, in our community, including specifically that mobile use, would be great for targeting the homeless. And so, absolutely, it would be directed for opioid use disorder. However, you know, he's gonna be, he or she, whoever, you know, bids and we hire, will be putting in 20 hours a week, and will be using them for the opioid effort. But it will just contain and include helping the homeless. And so, our hope is that it morphs over time with other funding sources that we can pull in, such as agreements with CalOptima and things like that, so that we can get Medi-Cal funds to really do our own version, if you want to call it that, of street medicine.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Councilmember Burns, or Mayor Protem.
Can you, off that, can you give me a definition of what street medicine is?
Yeah, absolutely. So, street medicine is a program that's being utilized in Garden Grove, and they're expanding to Anaheim, and I think possibly one other city. And it's, an organization put a proposal forward to Medi-Cal through CalOptima, seeking funding through this Cal AIM process, where the state is funneling money in to get treatment to homeless and to the folks who otherwise don't have any coverage. And so, this group goes out, finds people who have not enrolled in Medi-Cal, helps them get enrolled in Medi-Cal, and then begins to provide medical care right where they are. They don't ask them to show up at a facility. They come and they find them at the place where they tend to, you know, reside, and they deliver medical care, they give them assessments, they medicate them and all this. And so, one of the things that we will be specifically focusing on in the opioid effort would be medical-assisted treatment, where you can give injections of a medication called buprenorphine, where it is, it basically makes opioids ineffective if they were to take them, and it helps recover. And it's basically a newer, better idea of like what methadone was in the past. And so, this is a monthly, once-a-month injection that has done radical improvements across the country in anywhere where it's been put in service. So, that's one of the things we'd be looking at. And as we begin that process, our hopes would be that maybe it could grow from just opioid use disorder, disorder that we're treating, to lots of other things for these people.
Okay, as, street medicine, my old dope days, I just hope you're not gonna feed them needles and...
No, no, it's, it's, all it is, is providing health care. Yeah, it's, it's, it's just providing health care to, and this, this proposal is not street medicine, but as I'm describing, street medicine, it's health care provided to those that are homeless. And it's happening around us. We actually put in a proposal, the city did for it, and they chose Anaheim over us because of the higher number of homeless.
And you guys are looking for about $122,000 to fund these, these projects that you're asking for?
So, for fiscal year 2425, we're asking for $900,000. And that's what we have in the bank, that we can only spend on this.
Yeah, the 893.
Yeah, that's what we're asking.
But then above that, you're asking for another 122, 23, 22?
We're not asking for anything just yet above that. All of it's contained in that. So, everything that you see here, $120,000 on the Engagement Coordinator, $43,000 on a part-time contracted nurse, which is one we already have, we're just getting more hours for that person, which is why we didn't mention it as an additional position. The Engagement Coordinator, the Chief Medical Officer, the equipment and supplies of almost $400,000. All that would go into helping provide opioid use disorder treatment, preventative, education, you know, the whole thing. Yeah.
Thank you. Does anyone else have questions?
Yeah, I just wanted to confirm that this, this program, these positions will only exist as long as the outside funding is in place, and so there won't be any burden on Huntington Beach taxpayer financially.
That's correct. This, all we're gonna, all we're gonna do is use the opioid funds. And we have existing funds in place that you can see in that third column, but those existing funds are existing. They're already there. It's just, we're adding time to a person that we already have. So, we're not adding any cost. And anything that we might envision, we're talking about possibilities in the future, would all be things that would be brought before you, once we find appropriate funding sources to fund anything at all outside of exactly what we're describing.
Yeah, so then how much runway will we get, knowing that the funding's gonna continue to come in? Like, I just like notice for you guys that we can keep the program going, or if we need to shut it down?
For this, basically, a majority of the sources where the money's coming are gonna be here for about 18 years.
Okay.
So, we expect this to be a pretty long-term thing, but things change.
Right.
And so, as soon as we ever find out anything otherwise, you would know right away, but we expect this to be 18 years or so of funding.
Okay, thanks.
And Councilmember McKean, if I can, for a little bit of context as well, the opioid settlement is a result of Huntington Beach suing the pharmaceutical companies back in 2019. And there was a national settlement. It was billions and billions of dollars. Our slice of the pie is estimated at about $4 to $5 million over a few years, and payments over a few years. So, from that source directly, about $4 to $5 million.
Anybody else? Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much, and thank you for pushing the button for me.
So now, we're moving on to closed session announcements.
Sorry. You want to go back to the project?
Oh, you're going back to the project. I'm sorry. Okay. Go ahead. Sorry, Sunny, I forgot about you.
No problem. So, just for key budget considerations, so, City Council feedback is requested, just especially as it relates to the addition of four FTEs across the various departments. And then, the general fund portion of the waterfront loan settlement, the allocation as recommended with the 25% of the Section 115 trust, and the allocations to the Equipment Replacement Fund, Workers Compensation Fund, and General Liability Fund, as well as the Fire Department's Year One Spending Plan for the opioid settlement funds. And then, based on City Council feedback tonight, staff will make requisite adjustments to our proposed 2425 budget. And then, the revised budget will be brought back for formal City Council consideration and potential adoption on June 4th. So, one thing I'd also like to note as well is that the budget, the proposed 2425 budget will be available on the city's website this weekend. So, it should be available hopefully by the end of day Saturday or early Sunday morning for the public to review. So, with that, I'd like to open it for any additional questions.
Does anybody else? Councilmember Bolton.
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, I do have a couple of questions. So, going back to slides 10 and 11, just to clarify, so those are the ones that cover the new FTEs that are being requested. So, I just wanna make sure that I, you know, clarify it in my mind. So, these are positions that are either allowing us to increase revenue, because they're in a revenue-generating position, they're there for efficiency's sake, or they're, because we have to have them for compliance with some type of measure. Is that a pretty fair description of what these four new positions are for?
So, they would, so, in the case of community development, it would be revenue generating for the Police Department, it would be for the City Council's strategic goal of public, of public safety. And then, for Public Works, yes, it would be for both efficiencies as well as for cost savings, so.
Okay, thanks.
And public safety maintenance as well.
One more question on the detailed budget. So, the big notebook that we got had all the tables in them. So, there's a table for the HR Department, and I wanted to ask a question about a line item in that. So, it's on page 230. And I just wanna point out, 230. So, Human Resources Proposed Budget, if you go down to the next-to-last line, before the total for operating expenses, it is a line for claims expenses. And it references a 95% year-over-year increase for claims expenses. And so, I wanted to ask if someone could provide information about what that represents. And then, the second question is whether the staff is working on any type of plan to help reduce those expenses, assuming they're the type of thing that could be reduced.
230 is the Public Works section.
Oh, okay, so I'm sorry, 203. I'm reversing my numbers, so 203.
So, the increase in the claims expenses is something that we develop in, so, the claims expenses is something that we develop in conjunction with the City Attorney's Office as well as with our General Liability's Claims Examiner, Carl Warren. So, we look at all of our outstanding claims, and we look to see what will potentially be settled in the upcoming fiscal year, and then, we budget accordingly. So, we do have a large number of claims, and with that, it just depends on, you know, timing as far as what could potentially be settled in the next year.
Is it possible, then, for somebody to provide some information on what that amount encompasses? And also, again, whether there are things being considered by the staff to help reduce that amount? I'm just trying to get a sense for, you know, that's a, that's a big increase from one year to the next. So, what I wanna know, what I wanna know is if we have a handle on what's happening there and, you know, what we're gonna do about it, basically.
Because it does include legal claims, I'd have to defer to the City Attorney on that.
Yeah, and, and, correct me if I'm wrong, because I don't know how our risk assessment and valuation of claims translates to the budget necessarily, but I think what this is, is a forecast of evaluating each case for potential liability, right? So, I'm seeing a head nod. And we assign a number to it. Oftentimes, if there's a high damages motor vehicle accident, and I'm gonna speak in hypotheticals, because I don't want anything revealed about our internal assessment about a particular case, but hypothetically speaking, if there's a large damages motor vehicle accident case, we will evaluate the liability first and then the damages. If it's a, so what happens is, when we come out with an ultimate number, it's, that's a calculation of both the liability and the damages. So, you could have a situation where there's a motor vehicle accident that involves a s-... city worker and there's zero liability, right? But it could be based on the damages, it could be, or the damages claims, it could be a million dollars worth of damages, right? But we wouldn't necessarily say in the budget, it's a million dollars. We may say based on the probability of either succeeding at trial, based on the no liability picture, or in a settlement, based on the low liability picture or no liability picture, we will assign it, let's say, $100,000. So then we just put a footprint in the budget of $100,000. Am I, so far so good?
Yeah.
Okay. Now, on the other hand, we could have a high liability claim where we, we know that the city's at fault, right? But then on the other hand, the damages may only be, let's say it's a quarter million dollars in damages. We may go ahead, to be conservative, we may go ahead and, and put a $250,000 footprint in the budget on a $250,000 damages case because we know our liability's high. So with both of the knobs, we just sort of come up with an estimate of what it could be. Oftentimes, and I think Sonny has experience with this, with our office, oftentimes, we're so conservative that we're beating those numbers. So we may have a million dollar footprint in the budget, but we actually come out resolving it for $150,000. So, so I think that's my best explanation. If you have any other questions, I'm, I'm happy to answer, but I think that's my best explanation.
Okay. So then to the extent, because, okay, obviously if there are, if, is it all litigation claims? Because if it's all litigation claims, then that answers the question about whether there's anything that could be done to reduce, you know, the amount of claims that we're looking at every year? Because I understand that that just kind of depends on how often we get sued.
Right. They are, from my vantage point, they're liability claims. Now, finance may say it also includes claims that are pre-litigation. So there may be dollars built in there that I, that never come to my office because they're at the claim stage, not the litigation stage. So I would defer to finance on that clarification.
Okay.
So it, it does, because it would also include all claims that Carl Warren has as well, which would be in the pre-litigation stage.
Okay, thank you.
Is that it for questions? Councilmember Moser?
Thanks. Okay, a couple of questions. Let's see. One, for the combination of the engineer and deputy public works director, I just wanted to understand if there are any drawbacks to that of combining those positions or kind of what the benefits are, besides financial, obviously.
Yes, the benefit to that is we will not be filling the city engineer position, so there will be cost savings as part of that. It is efficient because we are combining the engineering section with the transportation section. Those two divisions work hand in hand. And so there is strong nexus between and cooperation between those two divisions and it makes sense to have one person overseeing both sections. And our city engineer is very capable of running transportation.
Okay, great, thank you very much. Also, for, I think for Sonny, page 14, it does talk about hiring a consultant for the updated fee schedule, looking at possible solutions considering we have projected deficits beginning next year. Since we're looking at being somewhat forward-thinking, I know in the past when we had projections of deficits, like back in 2008, let's say, and nine and on forward, we were presented, or the council then was presented with additional tools to look at maybe outside of the fee revenue enhancements. Will we be receiving those at the budget review meeting?
So we won't be presenting those at the budget adoption, however, we will continue to be presenting council with additional, with additional options throughout the fiscal year.
Okay, thank you. Let's see. Now going over to the CIP. Thank you, Sonny. For, just a couple of specific questions, I think on kind of projects for that. And well, one, I appreciate that 30 million was requested and 8 million was recommended due to the available monies. Just what happens though to those 22 millions worth of projects? Are any of those in a high priority position where it could negatively impact the city by not moving forward with them?
So that's a great question, Councilmember. Get closer. When we develop the CIP, we have four categories that we rank projects in. Basically, life safety, public health, those we make sure get funded. Then there's other ones like, I liken it to like painting your house. I'd love to paint my house every year and make it look brand new, but do we need to? No. So there's a lot of projects that we can stall off year after year, but of course, the deferred maintenance gets to a point where we have to do it. But fortunately enough, we plan it ahead so that, okay, we don't need to do it right now, it was requested, it's on the books. So that's when we say we have a seven-year capital improvement program. We look seven years ahead and said, what do we need to do in this city? And we'd like to do everything now, right now, but we can't. So the public safety ones and, you know, things such as the tide valves that keep streets from flooding so that we have, the fire department can get where they need to go when it rains and we have high tides. Those things get implemented. The other things just get deferred. I think if you look around the city, we have a lot of facilities. I wish I had a lot more money for our facilities, but we're addressing the public safety issues such as the drainage and the lower level and things of that nature we're addressing right away. I'd love to put a lot of lipstick on all of our hundreds of facilities in the city, but they don't have to be done right now.
Thank you. I mean, then, I guess this might be a Sonny item, or, I'm sorry, not Sonny, Chow. Looking at that, I know we had our infrastructure report card committee. Just can you fill us in on maybe the timing because some of those other items might show up within that space?
Actually, some of the items that were identified as part of the infrastructure report card are in the CIP. One example are the, the harbor, Tom, what was that, Huntington Harbor?
The bulkheads.
That was identified in the infrastructure report card, that's in our CIP. So some of that has risen to the priority of our CIP that you see today. Right now, as, as far as our schedule, June, where we are in progress with a draft future improvement needs. July, we're going to finalize our future improvement needs report. August, we have a public facilities financing plan. September, we will have a consolidated report. In October, we will have a final report as well as a public release for the infrastructure report card as well as the grade and strategies on addressing those needs. So that, that is the flow of the infrastructure report card right now. We do have our ratings, we do have our grades, and we've shared that with the council. It's just, we want to make sure we covered all of our bases before we divulge that grade to the public.
Thank you. I'm looking forward to the strategies in October. Thank you. With regards to just a couple more items on the CIP, the tide check valves, I was at a Sunset Beach community meeting and they were talking about pooling at Anderson in Sunset Beach. Do you know if that's covered? And we can talk about that later if not.
So Anderson Street, the pooling at Anderson is on Caltrans right of way, so we are working with Caltrans. Their tide check valves are old and don't work and actually some of their valves are manual. And sometimes they don't get their, get out there in time to install them. What they do is they have these big balloons, they throw them in the storm drain and they blow them up. And sometimes they don't get that, get down there in time to install them. So that's why we're having them put in the tide check valves because those are their 24/7/365 to help prevent that.
Great.
So that's actually a Caltrans project that we're working with them on.
Great, thank you. With regards to the McFadden sewer lift, do we have any information on the timing once we begin that again?
So the goal is to begin that again in the fall. We want to hit there before the rainy season. So when we do 35-foot big deep holes in the ground, we don't want to be doing it in February or March when it's raining and the groundwater level, I think everybody notices, when you drive through the city right now, we're still seeing water seep out of the streets. It's because our groundwater is super high from the rains we had. So we like to do our big digs in the fall and it'll probably be right around September when we start.
Great, thank you. Chow, with regards to the ADA improvement plan, not a lot of detail, but can you just tell us a little bit more about maybe the timing and just maybe high-level bullets of what that will include?
Okay, so we are in progress of the ADA transition plan for the entire city. It evaluates every path of travel, every public facility, city-owned, city-leased, park sidewalks. So you might be noticing some folks who are riding around in segways around town with measuring tape, those are the DAC consultants, disability, disability accessibility consultants. And so they have been in progress of serving the entire city for the last year and a half. We are finalizing the report and it is wrapping up at the end of the month. We have set up a meeting with internal staff in June, mid-June, so that we can review the report, evaluate the findings, and then come up with funding strategies. Right now, we have budgeted approximately $250,000 every year to address ADA improvements. So based on that report, that report will identify what we need to do to meet ADA compliance. And so we have a funding source, it's in our budget, it will be ongoing, that will help us comply with our ADA plan.
Thank you all.
Yeah, just real quick, I wanted to bring attention to page 22. We've had, you know, residents have had questions on the downtown and main street upgrades and just want to let the community know that that is in process with the street lining, better signage, and then the main street specific plan study, which will, the specific plan already exists and that's to flip the sidewalks on the second block to the outside to provide some more outdoor dining options. So I know residents have been curious about the status of that and I assure you, it's been in process, we're working on it, and you can see here that it's, it's been allocated with some financial dollars.
Okay, that's it. Now we'll be moving on to closed session. In, present in our closed session, we will have a conference with labor negotiators, government code section 54957 dot six. Agency designated representatives, Eric Para interim city manager. Also in attendance, Marissa Surr, Director of Human Resources, Travis Hopkins, Assistant City Manager, Michael Gates, City Attorney, and Sunny Han, Chief Financial Officer. Employee organization, non-represented employees. Conference with labor negotiators, government code section 54957 dash six. Agency designated representatives, Eric Para interim city manager. Also in attendance, Marissa Surr, Director of Human Resources, Travis Hopkins, Assistant City Manager, Michael Gates, City Attorney, and Sunny Han, Chief Financial Officer. Employee organization would be the management employees organization. Do we have a motion and a second to recess?
Second.
Moving to closed session.